Okay, let's call the special meeting, special city council meeting of June 4th, 2012, of the Rapid City Council, a special meeting for the Vision Fund Committee to order. We'll start with a roll call and the termination of quorum. Roll call, Charlene.
Nordstrom. Mason. Doyle. Sasso.
He's here.
Davis.
Here.
Peterson. Roberts. Brown. Wright. Laurenti.
We have a quorum. Thank you. The first item is an invocation and jury was going to give that tonight. You want to grab him, Steve? Thank you. Tonight, Councilman Jerry Wright will give an invocation, please.
I urge to do that which is right tonight and make the decisions that are good for this community, and all our actions tonight be done in commemoration and memory of the tragedy of 1972. Amen.
Amen.
One nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Vision Fund Committee, and as with past practice, it is chaired by the City Council President. I will remain in the audience to answer any questions that might come up, but this is a vision, an official Vision Fund Committee meeting. All recommendations made by this committee will ultimately come to the Legal and Finance Committee and to the City Council. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item of business is a request of the Vision Fund Plan Change. There are two items on this. The first one is from the ASA Fields, and do we have a presentation, Jerry, from anyone from ASA? Please come forward, identify yourself, and tell us about the plan change that you're requesting, please.
Good evening. My name is Rick Denherger, and I am representing this evening the Rapid City Junior Olympic Amateur Softball Association. Our request this evening, I don't know necessarily, is a change to our plan or to the original proposal submitted by our organization. What we're attempting to do is request funding so that we can begin the process of doing the initial planning and work for site preparation for the two new fields that 2012, or that we'll be using 2012 funds to build. It's our understanding at this point that the project is funded entirely in 2014, and we've had a number of conversations with individuals at the city, including Rod Johnson, and through that process, we've come to believe that, or wanted to at least approach the council about the possibility of releasing funds, $100,000 worth of funds, so that we could begin that process, understanding fully that we're still not, you know, fully funded until 2014. So, that's really the purpose of us being here this evening and the requests that we're making to the committee.
So, to clarify, Rick, the request is to release $100,000 of the 1.2 million allocated during 2012 for design, and the remaining 1.1 million would be still set up for the 2013 or 2014 calendar years, correct?
Yes, yeah, that's correct. It's also, you know, going through the process was very enlightening this time, and it became somewhat apparent that the council was committed to, you know, allocating those funds and earmarking those funds in certain years, but it also seemed that there would be opportunities to move those funds forward in the event that a particular organization or a funded organization was not ready at the time that their funds were to be released. And really, you know, for all practical purposes, we're ready to go. We have the ground, we have a preliminary plan that was put together by RJ. There are some things that potentially in the end could affect positively the amount of money that we end up needing for the project, and specifically, I don't know how many of you have seen the plan or have had a chance to even look at the proposal, one of the things that we'll need to do is there'll have to be a drainage study, and dependent upon how that comes out, you know, we may be able to change the elevation of the existing plan, which would require less fill dirt, which in the end would, you know, potentially mean that we don't need as much money. So, I guess our goal or our hope is that we would be able to start that process so that we know going into 2014 or the end of 2013 where we're at, and instead of, I mean, theoretically, if we were to wait until the funds, you know, until the funds are released, it's probably, by the time we go through the design phase, you know, and then go through all of the processes and bid lettings and so on and so forth, we're probably talking, realistically, two years from the release date that we would actually be able to utilize the field. So, hopefully, you know, our thought is that by taking care of this, or at least being proactive on this part of it, we might shorten that time period up if it ends up being 2014 or being ready to go if the opportunity were to come up prior to that, so.
Thank you, Rick. I'd like to get just a clarification from our city finance officer, Pauline Assomson, as to the funding and the allocation of the funding in this timeframe, and then I'd ask for a motion one way or the other so that we can open it up to questions or comments. Pauline, is the release of the $100,000 in 2012 and then the remainder of 1.1 million in 2013, or as Rick has suggested, even maybe even in 2014, still within the scope of the timeframe of these funds?
If you're asking are the funds available to be able to move those projects forward, they are. Our sales tax came in higher than we projected back in 2010, so there is money available for that. If, what is attached shows the $100,000 coming in 2012, and then the additional 1.1 in 2013, or as Rick has suggested, even maybe even in 2014, still within the scope of the timeframe of these funds? If you're asking are the funds available to be able to move those projects forward, they are. Our sales tax came in higher than we projected back in 2010, so there is money available for that. If, what is attached shows the $100,000 coming in 2012, and then the additional 1.1 in 2013. If they don't need it until 2014, that's fine, we can just, at that point, push it off to 2014 at the end of the year if it's not needed, or if they get started at the end of the year in 2013, it would be still available for them then.
Thank you, Pauline. So, at that point, I ask for a motion to... And define the advancement, Gary, if you would. We have a motion to advance the $100,000 in 2012 and the remainder in 2013 by Brown, second by Laurenti. All in favor, any other comment or question? Anywhere crossed? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for holding Bud down, too.
Yeah. Second item of business is the Mount Rushmore Road Corridor Project Phase One, and it looks like Terry Walserorth is going to speak with us, so it's all yours, Jerry.
Yeah, I just, I want to visit with you a little bit on scheduling on this particular project and funding levels. As you recall, and as you can see on the spreadsheet, there was $2 million allocated for Phase One of the Mount Rushmore Road Project. Phase One essentially runs from Tower Road to St. Patrick's Street. Phase Two would run from St. Patrick's Street down to Kansas City Street. And I went back and looked at the original minutes from the Vision Fund Meetings back in 2010, when the project was approved for the Vision Funding. For some reason, I'm not really sure why, the $2 million that's been allocated is only for the first phase. I think the thought process was that, at that time, the DOT was looking at possibly a 2016 date for Phase Two. Keep in mind, the DOT is totally in control of the scheduling on these projects. What they're looking at doing now is, 2014 is when Phase One would happen, Phase Two is scheduled for 2015. So, there's actually two things on your agenda tonight, and I guess first I'll address the Phase One funding. What we're asking for is that the remaining $1.8 million be moved up from 2015 to 2014.
Terry, let's address each one of them separately. So, let's deal with the Phase One item first.
All right.
Do you want to explain Phase Two? Is it important that we know the tie on that, or?
Yeah, I think we could address it all right now, and then...
And go back and separate it as two motions. Okay, so go ahead and take us through the whole process, please.
Yeah, Phase Two, keep in mind that the funding numbers that we're using are based out of the corridor study that was done in 2010, adopted by City Council in the summer of 2010. Phase Two estimates are about $3.1 million. Now, again, we've only allocated $2 million for Phase One, I'm going to be looking for an additional $3.1 million for Phase Two. I think your options here are pretty simple in my mind. We can either not do any improvements on Phase Two, which doesn't make sense, we could take the $2 million and we could stretch it through both Phase One and Phase Two, which, to be honest, isn't going to get a lot done. Or the other option is fully fund the project, and I'm here today, my recommendation to you is fully fund the project. To the tune of $3.1 million. That's correct, an additional $3.1 million. What I'd actually be asking for is $200,000 in 2013 for consultant services, and the remaining $2.9 million in 2015.
In addition to moving the 1.8 million forward to 2014 on Phase One, correct?
That's correct.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Wright, second by Peterson, to move the 1.8 million from 2015 forward to 2014 funding to match up with the DOT bids. Any comments or questions? Well, first to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Question for Pauline, as we, how are we looking down the road? Anything else that's going to be coming in at that 3.1? I'm fully in favor of this project, of course, and this motion, but is this something that's going to cause you some crimping?
Again, if you look at the 2010 five-year plan that we adopted as a council, at the time, our revenues were down for sales tax, and so our projections were very light on the revenue side, and we only estimated a 1% increase each of the years from 2010 to 2015. When you look at the first sheet that was attached to the agenda, that's what you see there, that the projected revenues, that's the 1%. But if you look at the 2011 actual, it's actually greater than what's budgeted for 2012. There is a second attachment to item number two that shows a more, it's a 3% revenue projection based off of 2011 actuals, which, again, the economy could take a turn, and we would have to figure something out, but at this time, if you use a 3% revenue projection for each of the years, without this 3.1 million additional, there's about $8 million projected to be left at the end of the five-year period. If you take the $3.1 million project and add that amendment to the project plan, that would still leave about $5 million in there at the end of the five-year period. As far as other projects, I know there's been some discussion from the swimming pool presentations about the funding available for that. That's the only other thing that I'm aware of at this time.
So, then how many bagels are we going to have to sail to make up the sales tax difference? None? Okay. Sounds like then there is the money available. All right. Then I fully support the motion, sir.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any others. I just want to clarify that we are dealing with two different phases of money here, and the questions overlap and can be a little bit confusing. The 1.8 million is to move forward from 2015 to 2014. That money's already been allocated, and I want to make sure that we get the question that Gary kind of asked answered, too, and that is, that money which was allocated for 2015, are we okay to move that forward even if we don't, irregardless of the 3.1? The 1.8 that we've already allocated, can we expend that in 2014 comfortably?
Yes, if you look at the first attachment, it would still show about $1.5 million in the cash at the end of the year. If all the revenues came in as expected with the 1% increase, and all the expenditures went out, we would still have $1.5 million.
So, we're all clear on that, that sliding it forward is not going to pinch. We'll go to Alderman, Steve Laurenti. Thank you, Pauline.
I also support this project. My question, Pauline, was on the balance available sources. Is that based on the 3% or the 1.5% that you just spoke about? It's based on a 3% growth for each year?
The one I just spoke about, where we would have $1.5 million left, is based on the 1% increase each year. So, even if you don't look at the, what is more realistic, at the 3%, considering where we're at right now, we would still be okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor, which is to move the 1.8? Alderman, charity Doyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question, I guess I just want clarification. This is $3.1 million that has not been allocated at all for Phase Two. Is that, am I hearing that correct?
That motion hasn't been made. The motion on the floor is to move the 1.8 forward. The 3.1 is another motion that's still hanging out.
Well, yes, but I need that clarified before I can actually...
Yes.
Okay, so it's not been considered before. Is this 3.1 million going to, you know, regardless of if it passes or not, or if we need more time to think about it or not, affect Phase One in any fashion? Terry?
Well, I think how it would affect it is how much improvements we're going to do on Phase One, and how much, I guess that would be some direction from the council, because if all we're going to spend is $2 million on the entire Phase One plus Phase Two, my question is, do you want to just spend it all on Phase One and do nothing on Phase Two? That, to be honest with you, doesn't make any sense to me. If all he wanted to do was spend $2 million, I think he would, he would kind of limit what work you're going to do on both projects. We could probably get the underground, or the overhead utilities placed underground. That would be about the extent of it, I think. You know, we've got a lot of things planned for this project, decorative lighting, obviously the overhead lines going underground, a lot of landscaping. It was a pretty extensive corridor study that was done. So, I, I do think I need the direction from you guys, because it's going to, it's going to affect what we asked for consultant to do.
So, they are absolutely interconnected?
Yeah, I think they are.
I'll yield for right now.
Thank you, Jerry. Alderman Wright?
By intention, my motion was to move the current project of the $2 million, the 1.8 million into 2014 for expenditure. We talked about 3.1 separately. So, the motion is to make the adjustment on the 1.8.
Alderman Mason?
Thank you. I guess what I would like to find out from you, Terry, is, given that these are so interconnected, I mean, if we move this up to 2014, you're going to want a commitment on the other end as well, and makes sense, given the practicality of this. So, I guess what I want to know is if, and I hate to mix the issues, but it does seem they're obviously interconnected here. If we commit part of the 3.1, hence, taking that number in half, can you continue to work on the Phase One with that commitment and then move forward on that? I mean, is that an option?
Well, I think our design would be based on having $1.5 million to spend. It's going to affect what we design.
Right. And you're asking, and what was the number again for the consultant fee again?
$200,000.
You want 200K? Yeah, I guess my concern is, I mean, when we're really looking at this, the 1.8 plus the 200K that you're talking about, that's $2 million, so we're looking at $5.1 million. And looking at the current spreadsheet, I guess I am having a little bit of angst in talking about this, because as Pauline mentioned earlier, maybe I'm forgetting here, but we also have a pool project coming up and some other issues that are going to be before us here soon. If you could respond to that, I guess...
Terry?
I will. I think it's a fair question, and I have wrestled with it for the last few months, to be honest with you, because we knew it was on the horizon. That's why I got to the point where I needed to put it on the agenda and get, and get direction from you guys. Keep in mind, the $2 million's already budgeted, that was already committed by previous councils, and here would be my argument for this project. I think that this Mount Rushmore Road project has been vetted thoroughly through so many public hearing processes, both through the 2012 Vision Fund process and through the public hearings that were held as part of the corridor study, and it has been public hearing after public hearing on it. So, I think that the council, past councils, have made a commitment to the project. So, I don't feel like I'm asking you to add a new project that hasn't been talked about to the list just because there may be some funding available. I think the city's made the commitment to the project. What I'm, what I'm here for is to try to meet the schedule that the DOT has placed before us. They are going to build Phase One in 2014, and they are going to build Phase Two in 2015, and we're kind of beholden to those schedules for them.
And so, what you're saying is that the Department of Transportation is not flexible on their schedule at all? I just want to make that clear.
They have deadline, they have, it's not that they're not flexible. I mean, this project's been sitting out there for a while. They have a road that's deteriorating and deteriorating quickly, and they have funding that's been earmarked and allocated through all of their public hearing processes, and they are ready to move forward.
Just last question, too, actually, I have two more questions for you. The other thing is, what is the DOT contributing on this, or, you know, from the state end?
Well, keep in mind, the DOT's doing all of the, basically all the road construction is DOT money. What, what the funding, the Vision funding is set aside for is placing the utilities underground. It's really all the enhancement projects that are going to go with it. So, the backbone of the infrastructure going in out there is DOT. We're going to replace water, and we're going to replace sewer. We have some storm sewer cost sharing, but the DOT's doing all the paving and majority of the storm sewer on the project.
My last question is just, given that we did have such an extensive study to start with on the Mount Rushmore project, could you give me a little bit of a description on what sort of consulting that you're going to be requiring with that $200,000?
Yeah, what that will entail, a lot, a lot of that is landscaping consultant, and right now on Phase One, CTEC is our civil, and WIS is our landscape consultant. What they're going, what they do is they, they take the corridor study, which is a good study, but keep in mind, it's more of a 30,000-foot level picture of what they want the corridor to look like. I'll be honest with you, we're not going to be able to do everything that's in this corridor study. There's just some things that we just can't fit, can't fit the square peg into the round hole in some places. But the consultants are going to look at more of a fine-tooth comb, you know, what can we physically do out there? They'll put the plans together and basically give us a biddable project.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you, Jordan. Alderman Peterson?
It looks like that we will have the money for this by our least calculation. It's a good project, and I think if we can bid it, everything together in one, at one point, that we increase our chances of getting a lower bid overall or paying less than we would if we parted it out, and plus, it makes it very hard for staff if we part things out. So, I'll be supporting both of these. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Alderman Sasso?
This is something I definitely would, will be supporting, even though we are talking a lot of money at the same time, when you look at the direction that we are headed, downtown revitalization, the, looking at where everything is going. It makes total sense, and there again, I believe that we will, in the long run, generate far more sales tax revenue because more people will want to come and stay in Rapid City. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Alderman Wright?
I support both phases full funding. I don't think there's anything worse than to do something half-baked, another word to use, but I won't. I think it's imperative that we complete it as design and take the funding in Phase One and honor it and keep it. Phase Two, I understand that it wasn't programmed per se, but I think we can find the will and way to get it done. So, I support full funding for both phases to do it right. Thank you.
Back to Alderman Mason?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure, fully clear on where we're going with this. Pauline, if I may, with the additional 3.1, which really comes to about 3.3 with the other consulting fees, depending on how you lump them, where exactly are we going to pull the funding? Or what is, you know, where do you see us pulling the other 3.3?
If we look at the more realistic numbers, even if, if you just take 2013's budget over what was originally budgeted, you're looking at over an additional $1 million just based on what was actually received in 2011. So, if you project a 3% sales tax increase for the rest of the years, 13, 14, and 15, we would have over $8 million left at the end of the year in 2015 if we did not do this project. If we do this project, you still have over $5.5 million left at the end of 2015. Now, if you don't want to use the 3% assumptions on the revenue side, and you just still use the 1%, we still have, right now, we have $5 million in there, and that would still leave us almost $2 million left, even if you leave the assumptions the same at 1%.
All right. The other question I guess I have is, do you foresee any effect coming on the next Vision Fund projects coming up? Those that would be proposed? I mean, would this have any effect on other projects? For example, the pool was mentioned earlier, and then future projects that may be presented?
Are you talking for the next round of 20, of the Vision Funding? I believe the thought process when this five-year plan was approved was that we were going to do a pay-as-you-go with this five-year plan and pay off all the debt, so that way in the next round of Vision Funding request that we could have a fresh slate and go out for a bond issue and do projects through that bond issue. So, I don't see where this would have any effect in the future, if that's the route you go. Now, I don't know what the decisions will be made on the pools at this time. I don't, last I had heard, they're still fine-tuning the numbers, so I'm not sure where that'll, that'll end up in the end.
Sure. I appreciate it. Again, I'll yield.
Thank you, Jordan. Any other comments from the dais?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do have a motion. If not, I will pass the gavel over to Bonnie and take a little liberty myself. I'm, I'm very much in favor of the project, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't share my feelings on this right now. Terry, I feel bad for you because you came into this project, as Jerry said, half-baked, and you're the one that has to bring it to us and, and make it come together. My concern is for the integrity of the Vision 2012 program, that, I mean, this is like somebody being a little bit pregnant. You either are or you aren't, and we knew all along that this project...
Yeah, we do have a motion. If not, I will pass the gavel over to Bonnie and take a little liberty myself. I'm, I'm very much in favor of the project, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't share my feelings on this right now. Terry, I, I feel bad for you, because you came into this project, as Jerry said, half-baked, and you're the one that has to bring it to us and, and make it come together. My concern is for the integrity of the, of the Vision 2012 program, that, I mean, this is like somebody being a little bit pregnant. You either are or you aren't. And we knew all along that this project was Phase One and Phase Two. And this council and previous councils knew that it was the whole thing all along. And yet, we only, we only funded part of it. Now, I don't know what we thought was going to happen to the other part of it, but we're fully pregnant tonight, folks. The little bit was before. And we now have to act upon the rest of that Mount Rushmore corridor. I'm not as opposed to that action as I am to what it does to the, the integrity of the project, the 2012 Vision Fund. If, if I were a applicant for that round of funding, and I was not awarded because this money was awarded to the, to this project, and then it was moved forward without them having to come forward and proving the worth of Phase Two, when maybe they felt that theirs was valid, I have a, I have a real moral issue that I'm struggling with, even though the project, I'm fully behind. I, I think we're on a very, very dangerous ground here. And we, we may make an exception tonight, because this is a project that we need to move forward on. But for those of you that are going to be left behind, please be cautious. I, I think we're on real slippery ground. With that, any other comments from the dais? If not, we have a motion on the floor to approve moving the 1.8 to 2014. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passes. Item two is discussion and direction regarding the Phase Two. I think Terry has given us a pretty good understanding of what Phase Two would involve in the dollar signs. Can we have a motion directing so that we can go ahead and, and open up the discussion on it?
I will move the motion to approve the movement of funds or allocation of funds for the design in 2013 and expenditure of 2.9 million in 2015.
Second.
So we have a motion by Wright, a second by Brown of 200,000 in 2013 and 2.9 in 2015. Is that correct, Jerry?
That's correct.
And a motion by, a second by Brown, was that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And we'll go to Charity Doyle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is that since this was before my time, I understand that the, the council always knew there'd be Phases One and Two. However, did Phase Two and the plans thereof go through the same scrutiny and through the same process for approval as did Phase One? I know it was before your time, too.
It is before my time. The only, the only thing I can fall back on is this. The corridor study wasn't just for Phase One. It was Phase One, Phase Two. It was, like I said, it wasn't, we weren't dealing with just one section of this roadway. We were always looking, I think, I would assume you were always looking at the, the complete project. My guess is that the thought process was, I think at the time, they were thinking 2016 was going to be the construction date on Phase Two, and that they would come back through for the funding in the next round of funding. My argument still is that we're really not talking about a new project here as much as a correction of the funding that was allocated for it. That's the best I can do, to be honest with you.
So based on SD DOT finalizing their schedule, we're needing to move this up, however the funds were never actually allocated?
That's correct.
Is what I'm hearing. I guess my biggest concern is that, you know, how people bring forward projects through the, the vision process, and they have, you know, the dream project, and then something somewhere in the middle, and then bare minimum what they'll accept if, if we'll grant them the funds to do it. Could we in any way be opening up the possibility or setting the precedent that we approve projects in the future? And then they come in and say, well, you know, due to this, we'd like, we'd like this alternative as well and not have to go through that same scrutiny? That would be my question. And I don't know the answer to it, and I don't expect you to have the answer to it, but it is something I think we need to think about, regardless of our support of the project. So I'm done putting you on the spot.
We'll go to Alderman Laurenti.
Terry, based, you know, based on the numbers, and I think, you know, Pauline, I appreciate the input as well this evening, I think, I think, you know, my colleagues need to think about the fact that we are looking at a conservative projection of where our revenues will be. And even if we come, if we, we're figuring at the lower figure, the 1 and 1/4, 1 and 1/2, 1%, so even better. At 1%, we still have the funds there. And I think if we're going to go down this road, no pun intended, we need to make sure that we do it right. It's got, I mean, I, I don't know the facts, but I would say that it's our most widely-used street that we have in the entire city. And it's a, it's a reflection of the dedication of our city government to present, you know, a very beautiful scenic type of road on their way to the southern hills. And perhaps, maybe we can get a lot of them to stay a little bit longer going up this corridor as well. And with all of the things we're doing downtown, I think it, it's a, it's a great match. This is what the 2012 funds were for. This is a city project, in my opinion. We do have these other ones that, and I appreciate Alderman Mason's comments about the other projects that have come to us, and, you know, they've got funds, especially the 50-meter pool. And I, I support that as well, but I think we have to make a, a choice at this point. And we may be able to do all of it in the future, as the city continues to grow in revenues as well. But again, we're, we're looking at a conservative projection, and we have those funds there to, to do this right. And I think we should support that, the fact that the council got the first phase started, and we need to finish this and, and make it look right. Thank you.
We'll go to, we didn't have a Jeff Barber, but we do happen to have a mayor in his seat. We'll go to Mayor Koike first, and then we'll come back to Alderman Nordstrom. Mayor?
Thank you, Dave. Couple of things to mention. One, one option that Terry didn't bring up, which probably could be mentioned, is that one option that we could, could proceed with is, is we could go to the Department of Transportation and to the, and to the governor's office and ask for a, a delay in, in the, in the project, and going back to the original schedule. And of course, I don't support doing that based on the fact that our revenues are coming in at, at a rate that we, that we didn't expect. And we do appreciate the additional funds, and it gives us the ability to do this project. I think that in terms of, and having been part of the previous round of 2012, and trying to recollect all that was discussed, what I do recall is, is that the corridor study was very thorough, and it actually included all the way to Omaha Street. And we're not going to be going all the way to, to Omaha. But I, I think that the DOT, by offering to move up the, the, the funding and doing this project sooner, combined with the fact that our sales tax is coming in at a higher rate, I mean, earlier this year, the latest report indicates that we're up about 9%. But we're conservatively estimating for the budget and for capital improvements, 3%. And so I think that, I, I don't, I understand your concern, Dave. I don't think that this is a, this is a dangerous ground that we're treading on, mainly because the reason that Phase Two wasn't allocated at the time was it was going to be far beyond 2015. And now we're able to move it up. We have the opportunity to do so. And the means to do so, let's get this project done. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions, because I'm, I'm just kind of trying to understand or get a feel for what, what is taking place here. Am I hearing it correctly, Mr. Chair, that we've got two issues of concern? It looks like we're setting a precedent. Is that, is that what the issue is that I'm hearing? Bringing an item forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Is, is, I need to ask, I guess, Pauline, I'll ask her this question, is, is this kind of an unusual situation that we're, that we're doing, bringing items forward from, from down the road, so to speak, in years in the future, and bringing them forward?
In the past, since I've been with the city, we have not added new projects to the five-year Vision Plan. However, as Mr. Waltersurf has pointed out, technically, this really isn't a brand-new project. It's just an extension of an already-existing project. So it's different in that respect. I have no historical knowledge as, if any of that has ever happened before.
I am looking across the room here, and I'm not seeing anybody here that might have that experience. It seems like we've done this before, or the city's done this before. And I can't remember the, the circumstance from back, way back, but it, it seems like it's happened before. The other one is, again, going back to Pauline, is the, it, it, just in case we could not make this even conservative number of the 1% meet that, wouldn't we have to go back and re-review everything on the vision funding? For, for example, I'll just pick on a year as 2015. We would have to go back and reassess them anyway, correct?
If the sales tax were really that bad, yes, we would have to go back and assess all the projects still remaining. With these five-year plans, as you are aware, a lot of times, the projects don't happen when they're scheduled to happen anyway. You know, we still have some projects hanging out from Phase Three that we have budgeted out to 2015. So not that I'm saying that's going to happen in any of these Phase Four projects, but it's a possibility. If there's somebody that's required to have matching funds, they may not be able to get their project done in that five-year time period. And so it's, in my mind, if the economy takes a downturn again, and we need to reevaluate, any project that has not already been started will be subject to reevaluation at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that kind of sums it up for me, is that if we did separate the two issues out and keep them separate, and then if something does dramatically happen for the worse, we would still have the opportunity, opportunity to come back and revisit them in the future. So that's the conclusion I'm coming up with now. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. We'll go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This project, from the very beginning, was presented to the public, presented to this, to the councils, as one whole project, Tower Road to Omaha. There is no misconception that, in the public's view, or in the council's view, in my opinion, that this was to be a broke-up, maybe we'll find the last part or not. I think if there's a precedent to be set, is that we have to make sure that the council slows down and actually looks at all these projects and make sure we got all of our i's dotted and t's crossed. We get in a hurry, get caught up in the motion. This should be taken, give us the point that start watching what you're okay, and make sure you have the whole thing finished. I would not like to see us, I would not vote in favor of going to the state or anybody and tell them to slow down, step back. Once you do that, you're put back on the bottom of the pile. And then with what the government funding has been in the past, we, we could have, be in a heck of a problem of trying to get this done. To me, the unprecedented thing here is the state wanting to move it forward. If we don't take advantage of that and get it done now, we could be in a lot of problems. And I see a state legislator back there really shaking her head, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Gary. We'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to have to agree with Gary on this. It would worry me very much if we went to the state and asked them to delay this project, because I know we did that on East North Street, and we're finally getting that done. And I would love to have seen the state come forward and say, we want to do that project early. So I think it's very important that we do this, we do it right, and we do it now. This may be a little bit different, but I guarantee us on the council, on our time on the council, we will probably never see the state put their road construction up a year. So, you know, I'm saying, I'm for favor for this. I want to see it done. I don't want to do half a project and stop. I think that would be ridiculous. So let's get it done and get it done now, and you have my support.
Any other comments from the dais? We have a motion to allocate 3.1 million, 200,000 in 2013, and 2.9 million of it in 2015 to the Phase Two of the Mount Rushmore Road project. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Motion passes. Thank you. That is the last item on the agenda of the special council meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? We are adjourned. We have about 15 minutes until...